The February 12, 2020 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners Meeting is now convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Platt?
Commissioner Platt, can you hear us on the phone?
We had him.
Mr. Gambetti?
Here.
Commissioner Marlin Capuya?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Chair Cruz?
Here. Thank you.
Should we try Commissioner Platt again? I almost think I hear something small.
Commissioner Platt, can you hear us? We cannot hear you. You might be on mute. Let's proceed, and I'll try to get him back on the line.
Okay, thank you. All right, so first we have Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Gambetti?
I think you should report.
All right. Commissioner Marlin Capuya?
January 20th, went to the MLK Scanner Breakfast.
Great. Commissioner Myers?
Also, January 20th, I went to the MLK Scanner Breakfast. January 23rd, attended the Division Bus Rapid Transit Event where FTA delivered the initial funding check, $87 million check to that.
Great.
January 30th, just started C2P2 negotiations for the the delivery mechanism for the policy framework. And then January 31st, I toured the Rockwood Rising Site, Rockwood Rising Site, and was able to tour the Oregon Tradeswomen new facility where they've expanded their capacity and have made it so where they've actually quadrupled their capacity to put students through.
Great, thank you. All right, for my part, I attended the Prosper Portland Budget Work Session on January 22nd. I attended an executive session with City Council to discuss the Broadway Corridor Project on February 4th. And on the same day, February 4th, I attended the Chinese New Year Event at the Lansu Chinese Garden, which was a great event for, everybody should try to go next year. It was great. All right, next up, we have the Executive Director Report. And Myra, would you like to?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Chair Cruz, Commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Myla Rola, and I'm the Director of Equity Governance and Communications at Prosper Portland. Kimberly Branham, our Executive Director, is addressing a health emergency. Might be able to join later in the meeting. So as Prosper Portland, we want to acknowledge the celebration of Black History Month. And for this reason, we encourage everyone to support black-owned businesses this month and every month. And to do so, go to mercadespdx.com and click on the Directory tab for a listing of local businesses. We also want to invite small business owners to attend the Greet and Glow Grow Business to Business Fair Tuesday, February 25th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Athletic and Outdoor Professional Group, in collaboration with Mercadis and Prosper Portland, present a unique B2B community trade show designed to connect small businesses with service providers from legal, finance, marketing, manufacturing, advertising, IT, and more. The event will be held at the Left Bank Annex, and please visit AOPortland.com for more information. Speaking of small business support, Prosper Portland is kicking off a new small business-focused initiative this month. The Small Business Orientation Events will be held the last Wednesday of each month at alternating locations around town. The Orientation is a free event series that introduces small business owners to a wide variety of programs and assistance available through Prosper Portland. Our kickoff event will be held Wednesday, February 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Portland Mercado. And for more information and registration for the event, go to prosperportland.us and click on the News and Events tab. Finally, we want to acknowledge the LANS Performance Audit that was released today by the city auditor. And as part of this acknowledgement, we want to provide a few highlights. Through this effort, we delivered innovative, community-centered projects such as Portland Mercado, LANS Commons, and Asian Health and Service Center. We built 364 new housing units, including 258 affordable. We supported 64 businesses with $1.4 billion in loans and grants, and we directed 55% of Prosperity Investment Program Grant Assistant Resources to businesses owned by people of color. The complete LANS Action Plan Accomplishment Report will be released later this week and will be available in our website for review. To conclude this portion of the meeting, I want to introduce two great staff that are joining our team. First, Nicholas Nick Ioana, Procurement Services Coordinator. Nick is coming to Prosper Portland from Washington County, where he was a senior buyer. Nick possesses a wealth of procurement and public contracting experience and has been in Portland for two years. He is originally from New Paltz, New York, and a graduate from Southern New Hampshire University. Welcome, Nick. And last but not least, we have Nancy Wilson, Development Manager. Nancy is joining Prosper Portland from Nashville, Tennessee, where she's been employed with the Metropolitan Development and Housing Agency. Nancy brings a combination of technical and management experience in development, finance, project management, and program management fields, all key skillsets to supporting our staff managing the Community Livability Grants and the Prosperity Investment Grant Programs, affordable commercial tenanting, and our important project and program work in North and Northeast Portland and the Central East Side. Nancy has a degree in Architecture from Howard University and a Master's in Business Administration from Morgan State University in Baltimore. So welcome to both.
Welcome, Nancy and Nick. Glad to have you. Great. All right, so next up, we have the minutes from the January 15th meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Thank you. Second, all right. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
All right, they pass. Commissioner Platt, are you with us? Hello? Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. So next up, we have two items on the consent agenda. Actually, three resolutions, two items, but three resolutions. And we can consider them as part of a single vote. So would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7358, 7359, and 7360?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
Chair Cruz, I'm sorry to interrupt again. Did you call for public comments not on the agenda? Did I miss that?
I'm sorry, no, I didn't. I was just thinking, I skipped over that because I thought we didn't have any. Do we have any public comments?
I don't believe we do.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that, thank you. Okay, all right, so back to the consent items. We have a motion, and it's been seconded.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda passes. So next up, we have the regular agenda, and this is an information item, an update on the Cluster Action Plans. And Tori Campbell, I believe, is going to present first. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Myra. As my grandparents would say, it is good to see you, and it is good to be seen.
Are we ever going to meet your grandparents?
Sadly, only through my stories at this point, so. But I wanted to take a few minutes to provide an update on our Cluster Action Plans. Then you'll also have a chance to hear from the team, kind of the frontline staff who do incredible work in the city. And we also have a few partners, some of the businesses that have also been benefactors as well as partners in the work. So I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. So first, just want to start off with what we call our Business and Industry Team. We'll try to refer to it as the BNI Team here on out, just because that's just a lot of words. The Business and Industry Team really works to concentrate around, think about our strategic plan, access to high-quality employment, and their primary tactic being the provision of business development and technical assistance, as well as their secondary one is workforce training. And so a lot of that comes through referrals, working with Work Systems, Inc., as well as working with our Workforce Navigator Programs. The team also devotes a small portion of its work towards equitable wealth creation, mainly through developing access to capital and with customers, in particular founders of color. Want to just tell you a little bit around the five areas of focus and attention that the BNI Team supports on a day-to-day basis, and also really the mantra, the mission statement of the team moving forward within our new action plan, which is helping traded companies become more inclusive and helping inclusive traded sector companies grow. And that's really the core thrust of the work that they're doing in the implementation of the new action plan. Within the scope of the team's work, we're talking about clusters today, obviously, but the BNI Team also covers Prosper Portland's interaction within traded sectors just in general. Each vertical within the team works towards this same mission of helping traded sectors, companies become more inclusive and helping these companies grow. They have over 45 years' worth of experience combined, and you definitely will hear that and see their passion come out as they share with you about the particular cluster that they're focused on today. As an example, within the clusters, which we'll be focusing on today, but I want to take just a quick moment to talk around Portland Means Progress, which acts as a gateway for established firms to engage with Prosper Portland and many of our programs. And obviously, that is a new program that was launched last year, and we're starting to see already some early beginnings of promising opportunities of what that platform and point of connection is providing for the private sector to engage in that work. Not only that, but the BNI Team also manages our city's international business development work, and we do that in partnership with the Office of Government Relations on building valuable relationships overseas. The Portland Film Office is also housed within the BNI Team, and the BNI also manages its primary traded sector initiative, which is the Portland Enterprise Zone. Before we move forward, I just want to just do a little bit of a background, talking a little bit about what, when we say clusters, what does that mean and why does that matter? And so the four industry clusters that serve, that comprise some of our city's highest paying, as well as our highest skilled jobs, but also within the clusters that we're focusing in on, they also tend to employ thousands of middle-wage workers, particularly in manufacturing. And so I'll just take a moment to unpack this slide you have in front of you, which gives you a sense of the ecosystem that's both required and necessary to constitute a cluster and what makes the greater Portland city a really unique place for the clusters that we focus in on. So the industry clusters are all within traded sector, which means these companies continually, they're always exposed to the competitive, both foreign and local, markets and those pressures, and oftentimes, they can be very extreme. And so most companies with these sectors have global choices and are always factoring, what is the best place for us to call home and to do our work and to do our business? What keeps many of them together is an agglomeration, and that's a scrabble word if I've ever heard of one, which is the effect of clusters, really where the whole is better than, excuse me, the whole being greater than the sum of its parts. In essence, there's synergy here, and that's what makes a cluster work. In this slide, you see both parts that all need to function in concert to enable successful business growth. And fortunately, as I've said, Portland and Greater Portland, through foresight and also just some luck, we have been able to develop a unique set of assets that make this a very conducive environment for businesses to call home and to be successful, which is a good mixture of talent, infrastructure, and anchor companies. So I want to share a little bit about exactly what are our cluster subject matter experts doing on a day-to-day and how do we support their work. The cluster team supports the growth of Portland's four key cluster industries, and each cluster has one full-time FTE that's devoted to that work. And 40% of their time is devoted to building relationships. As you imagine, that's just an incredibly important component of both of them, knowing the lay of the land, as well as becoming subject matter experts in that field. This work is critical. It also helps to build connections, helps them to understand where are both the gaps and the challenges. 40% in addition to that is also spent just developing and implementing programs. We're finding more and more that companies, that's really what they need. They need the tools. They don't just need the challenge or even the aspiration, but they actually need tools and programs to help them achieve their goals. And so not only are our subject matter experts within the field great at understanding and identifying gaps and opportunities, they also have become well-versed in creating and finding out kind of the best practices and programs to support the work. And lastly, 20% of their time is spent with business recruitment, clusters, marketing, and also responding to needs as they come up. Now, we are taking a few minutes today to talk about the new plan, and just wanted to kind of walk you through how we came about to the plan, what was the process. We really feel like this is important to explain the why, as opposed to just to the final product. So in 2009, then PDC began its work supporting four key traded sector clusters. And this slide basically shows you that progression of activities involved in developing what ended up being a holistic cluster strategy. And importantly, this process is continuous, and as you'd imagine, it is sensitive to business cycles. So we always have to revisit it and say, are we positioning ourselves and companies for the greatest and maximizing both time, you know, talent, and treasure within our city's ecosystem? Our current Cluster Action Plan and Development Project utilizes the same process. But in this case, this time with our strategic goal in mind, we really applied an equity lens. And I would say the plan that you have in front of you and that our team is implementing is really the first of its kind nationally, where it really has infused equity into the whole of the plan, as opposed to maybe making an addendum at the end, like, oh, we need to put this in. And so there are some unique elements that we believe are appropriate, and there's also some radical innovation that's also at play within the action plan. And a lot of that's been informed by the relationships being built within the clusters and the companies, and also just understanding market forces. This slide, put this together just to really give you a sense of what are the four key elements that in any cluster you're thinking about, which is what all businesses universally need, access to business know-how, access to new markets, access to capital, and access to diverse workforce, almost no matter where they are in their business lifecycle, whether they're just starting or they've been around for 40 years. There's business know-how. I need a business plan. I need to know how to diversify and create a healthier culture around race. I mean, that's a business know-how that not all of us come to our business with. And so we're always thinking, how do we support them in that way? And you would apply that same idea to markets, capital, and workforce. And so a lot of the thrust of the team is addressing these through programs, through thoughtful interventions, and just thought partnership with businesses. Another thing we've also worked on, as you would imagine, the work is complex, it's dynamic, it's nuanced. But at the same time, it should not be void of clarity in terms of we're doing all of these actions that should result in this. There was a wise man who once said, "We should not confuse activity with achievement." That was Bill Walton, and I think that's very appropriate. Like oftentimes, we can just be busy, but are we really achieving what we desire? And so for us, the call has been to make sure that not only is equity infused, but there's a theory of change, like we're purposely doing this and we intend to see this as a result. We can't guarantee it, right? So that's where we have to constantly monitor. But that theory of change needs to play out and be very prominent in order to assure that all of our activities every day can be measured. And so for us, competitive, growing firms, coupled with inclusive practices, we believe will equal equitable access to quality employment over the life of our work in the clusters. It'll look different, it'll show up differently over time, but this is our theory of change. This is what we are kind of betting on, and it's informing our work on a day-to-day basis. I want to just share a little bit of how that shows up, because naturally, if this is the case, how do we prioritize the work? And this slide basically gives you a sense of how thinking of the work is different as we look through it with an equity lens. And really, when we think about equity in this way, really what we're talking about is priorities. So who are we prioritizing in this case? And how are we ensuring that those businesses are being met and supported in the way in which they need? So for us, we're leading with race, and we prioritize direct impact on marginalized communities. So our highest priorities at this point within our action plan are people of color, high-percentage companies where they employ people of color within their workforce, as well as women-owned businesses. And then there's a secondary, kind of a concentric circle, if you will, a secondary priority of high-percentage, middle-wage jobs. So these are still companies that we feel like can create opportunities as we support them. They're also located in disadvantaged areas, so in this case, geography does matter, where those businesses call home, such as East Portland. And also that we provide other community access opportunities. And so when we think about some of our secondary priorities, the focus is maybe not so much the direct impact, but it is recognizing that there's something very powerful about the indirect impacts coupled with incentives with respects to participation in our programming within our city. And so you'll get a better sense of what this looks like, because I know you're deeply curious of, how does it show up within each cluster? And so as the team comes up to present, they'll be able to walk you through how equity is now informing their work. And I think you'll be very intrigued at some of both the early findings and also some of the best practices that they're applying today. This slide, I feel like it's actually really helpful, because it shows some of the real thoughtfulness of the work. And this slide basically is showing you that it's not just doing everything, but it's actually doing a few things really, really well, based on needs and challenges within any particular cluster industry. So as an example, on one side, you see helping companies become more inclusive. Our team has assessed what's needed as an example within tech. Tech is doing a pretty good job in terms of growth, but where we find that they need the greatest amount of support and have called out for it is help us figure out how to recruit and retain a diverse and talented workforce. So a lot of the work that has been spent very strategically has been around culture change within those entities, within those companies, to help them be able to maximize their opportunity with local, diverse, and talent workforce. In the other case, when we say helping inclusive companies grow, as an example, and I won't steal all of this thunder, but metals and machinery tends to be historically one of our longstanding clusters. It also ends up being, it is also a cluster that is, I wouldn't say it's shrinking, but it's one of the smaller ones, but it retains some of the highest opportunities for middle-wage jobs that are a little bit more readily accessible with respects to education. So we end up seeing more people of color in these jobs. So if that's the case, they already have the diversity of workforce. The goal there is, let's help these companies grow. And so you can see that the team basically has thoughtfully considered, what does my cluster need? And how can I support it? And that's what this slide is trying to reflect. So in my last slide, before I conclude my opening comments, just of setting the table for you to hear what I think you will find be a very engaging conversation with the team, is just to talk about what's next. As you know, this is our action plan that we finalized here within this last few months, and we are currently implementing it. What are the things that we're anticipating to do over the next season, few years or so? The first one is just scaling the infrastructure of our inclusive programs. We're already seeing that some of our programs that we're putting out there based on the needs of companies are doing really, really well, and in many ways, in many instances, the demand for them is outweighing what we just have in terms of our ability to provide. As an example, there's a training coming up on how to help managers just know how to be able to create and be more thoughtful and kind of a culturally responsive way of managing. I think we had 30 positions that were open, and within a few days, like over 70 people applied for it. And these are within private sector companies. So this is a great example of, that's encouraging for us. So now the goal is, how do we scale this? We never want to be without space to take in those who say, "I want to learn how to do this to help my company," creating more healthy and dynamic and welcoming environment, which will in turn help the company itself become more competitive. So that's just a great example of using that as one scenario of, how do we then build infrastructure to scale many, if not all, the programs that we're doing that are focusing around inclusion? The other point to this is that for the next season, it'll probably happen over the next six months to a year, is really adjusting our metrics, as we've talked about this in our board retreat, and this is an often conversation we're having throughout the city, is moving away from outputs to outcomes. It's not enough to say 300 people were impacted or 400 companies, but what was the outcome? And so we're also trying to refine our metrics so they do a better job of telling a narrative through the numbers, of are we truly living into our theory of change in terms of helping companies become more inclusive and helping those traded sector companies grow? And then last but not least, I think the thing that also is incredibly important is, as a department where I get really excited, is creating that continuum of business supports. And so how do we continue to find ways where there's both collaboration, connective tissue, of business supports from our entrepreneurship and community economic development teams, which is where the Inclusive Business Resource Network is, which is really working with micro, small startup companies and providing them pathways towards growth? Ideally, we would love to say in two or three years, we can see a matriculation of companies coming through there that are now at a place where they're traded sector. And so there's already some early starts and some really positive signs about that, of which some of the team will highlight. But again, for us, we're thinking, we really want to be able to create an environment where Portland is able to be a great city for any and all businesses, all stripes, to be able to come, thrive, and have their business needs met. So at this time, without further ado, I'm going to invite up the team that leads our Cluster Action Plan and the various work, and they're going to walk you through their respective cluster, and then we'll go from there. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name's Jared. Good afternoon again. My name's Jared Weiner. I lead our work in the technology industry here at Prosper Portland. I've been doing this work for a little over eight years, and really glad and happy to be here to share a little bit about that work with y'all. So before I dive into the work that we do within So before I dive into the work that we do within the industry, I wanted to give a bit of an overview of the industry in general, so that you have a sense of who it is we work with and what type of companies those are. So to the left on the screen, you'll see three different frameworks at play when you think of businesses in this industry. So operations refers to the office, their presence here in the Portland community. Types of company refers to the work being done here. And then the third one of industry verticals refers to the different segments within the industry. And I should note on this third one, there's many, many more industry verticals. These are some of the largest and most influential within the tech industry. And I should also note that these aren't mutually exclusive. So for instance, Elemental Technologies was acquired by Amazon Web Services, so they would be an acquired company that is a B2B software product company. So that's one example. Airbnb has a Portland outpost here, is tech-enabled. And then a third example would be Instrument is a homegrown company that is a design studio in our community. So this is just meant to show that the cluster is dynamic, there's many different types of tech businesses. So when you think of tech, it's not just one type of business. And our cluster is strongest when it's dynamic and it has companies in many different segments. And so a bit of an overview on what is in the industry. So these numbers here refer to Multnomah County. You'll see similar slides from my colleagues as well. For the tech industry, that's significant, because it won't include numbers from Intel, their largest facility in the world is out in Hillsborough. So you won't see numbers like that. You won't see those numbers included in these figures. And then this cluster matters because it employs a significant number in our workforce. It's the fastest-growing segment in our economy and has average wages that are more than double a middle-wage job in Portland. And then there are jobs within the industry for people in just about every occupation. So on this last point, it's not just coders and software engineers. In fact, that accounts for only about half of the jobs in the industry. And that's really important, because when you think of the receptionists or the recruiters or the salespeople working within this industry segment, those folks are paid at a higher rate than they would be in other industry segments. So it's offering high-wage jobs for folks that are not just sort of what you would typically think of when you think of the software and technology industry. The big issue for the industry is, and the challenge that we face, is not the growth or the wages, it's how do we make sure that the access to this industry is shared more equitably? And so our interventions here at Prosper Portland mostly center around the Tech Town Initiative. And this started in June 2015, and it started with a public pledge that 13 companies made at the time. And our theory of change at that moment as an agency was this public pronouncement and some minimal support from our agency, mostly through an annual survey, would be enough for the industry to begin to change on their own. I think if looking back on that more than four years have passed, I think that initial thought was very naive, and a lot has changed with our effort in that time. So we realized pretty quickly that what was really needed to catalyze this type of change was infrastructure in place focused on how to bring folks together and actually enable the culture change that needed to occur, so that companies could recruit more diverse talent, so that they could retain that workforce and their entire workforce, and then train folks that are part of their existing workforce and those that are coming into the workforce, so that they can be successful as the culture of the organization changes. And so what we've learned from that is we needed to bring people together. And so at the core of it, we serve as a convener. There's three different leadership groups that come together to enable and support Tech Town. There's a morning session group that meets monthly right in this room, and those are DE and I, Diversity Equity and Inclusion leaders at the member companies that are part of Tech Town. And one of the things I sort of fall back on when it comes to this is something that one of those folks told me recently, which was, this work is very, very isolating when you're in a large company and you're the one person doing the work. And what those morning sessions provide them is the opportunity to feel like they're on a team of 30 or 40 individuals, however many come to that meeting. Even though it's only once a month, and even though it's only 90 minutes for that period of time, they feel like they're on a team of 30 or 40. And I thought that really points to one of the things we're really trying to drive with those sessions, of bringing those leaders at these companies together. Additionally, we bring together the CEOs of the member companies on a quarterly basis. You know, what we find with our work is the folks that can most enable change are the leaders at the top. They also have the largest impact on culture in an organization. And then the third group that we bring together is our steering committee. And these are leaders within the Tech Town effort, and they're employees at member companies. It's a smaller group, it's a group of eight individuals, and this is the most active group, and also enables a lot of the work at the other groups to occur. And a lot of the programming that Tech Town does and the direction that we take is driven by those folks. So it's not just me sitting up here that's driving this initiative, it's members of the community that are actually doing, of the Tech Town community that are actually doing it. Some of the things that they've done is, last year, they refined the mission, and then also achieved buy-in from CEOs at the member companies. And the mission is expand diversity, equity, and inclusion within pledge companies. And then Prosper Portland sort of sits, I mentioned, as a convener for this work, but also an enabler of it as well. So within recruiting, one of the things that we've had the most success with is bringing folks together around sort of shared goals, and particularly around the pipeline development and changing sort of that dynamic within the industry. So one of the things that we did last year, and will continue to do in future years, including this year, is we created a tech zone, which included more than 20 companies within the technology industry at the Portland Workforce Alliance's Youth Expo, and actually brought in physical furniture and elements of a tech office, so that those students, more than 6,000 of them, could actually see what it looked like to work in tech and get, and sort of put that on their radar as a possibility. Within the retain and train section, our most successful program to date is an ally shift training. We do those just about monthly, and they're three-hour trainings. We have 20 facilitators at, spread out among different member companies that lead sessions of up to 30 people. And those three-hour sessions give employees at the member companies access to training that informs them on topics related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then spend time in small group discussion, sort of playing out different scenarios, so that they can actually lean in and live into the moment of what it means to be an ally in a certain situation. One of those trainings is actually going on right now, as we're up here. And last year, just for context, we trained more than 350 people at the member companies through these trainings. One of the things we're also very excited about in 2020 is hearing and talking with employees and different folks at these companies. One of the biggest gaps that we saw was how managers are prepared to lead staff, particularly staff that is becoming more diverse and changing. And so we're launching next week, actually, a How to Be a More Effective and Inclusive Manager Series training. So both addressing a need of providing additional training for managers, but then also, you know, each one of those managers that's training, is being trained, also has employees, so it's impacting them indirectly through that as well. And then the final piece up here is measure. And so this is one of the threads that has continued throughout the Tech Town Initiative. Each year, we do an employee survey. We get, you know, a huge data set back. So last year, we had more than 2,100 responses to the survey. So we get a really good sampling of what, not just Tech Town, but what the industry dynamics are at play, both from a demographic perspective, as well as what their perception is when it comes to culture change and to diversity, equity, and inclusion points. So this is sort of encompasses what Tech Town is. I mentioned it started with 13 companies. It's grown to a group of 30 companies employing about 3,500 people within Portland, and they're unified by not just a public commitment, but sort of this community that we have built and also taking action as well. And so this slide sort of serves to point out what is next when it comes to interventions in this industry sector. And so as much as Tech Town has been focused on the quality jobs piece, as y'all are well aware, wealth creation is a fundamental pillar of Prosper Portland's strategic plan. So is there a way that we can have a positive impact in the technology industry impacting who becomes the leaders and founders of our next companies? So can we support entrepreneurship in communities of color, and not just entrepreneurship in general, but in this fast-growing, high-wealth industry sector as well? And so it is a new focus. We know that we will be leveraging existing partnerships that we have within the technology industry, as well as those that we have throughout the agency. We also know that we will utilize the cluster process that Tori spoke about earlier. What we don't know is exactly what those interventions will look like, what, that's sort of why we'll follow this cluster process, to figure out how we can have that greatest impact with the resources that we have available. So before I turn it over to my colleagues, I wanted to share one more thing, which is how much I've learned in diving into this work. I've met amazing leaders I would not have met with a traditional business development approach. And together, we've been able to build partnerships and amplify this work in ways that I didn't even know were possible. My work product is better because of this opportunity to dive into this work, and I'm a better person as a result as well. And as a six-foot-four cisgendered white male, I am a testament that this is not a zero-sum game. Equity, diversity, and inclusion, work benefits everyone, including those in the dominant culture. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to share our work today. My name's Pam Neal, and I've worked with the Green Cities Cluster now for almost 14 years here at Prosper Portland. The Green Cities Cluster is complex. It crosses over many segments of our economy. The cluster is comprised of businesses that produce a green product or service, and it typically falls within four areas where we have a competitive advantage, that being environmental, green building products and services, transportation, and energy. Just some background and what we know and why the cluster matters. The cluster provides more than 20,000 jobs across 1,000 firms. It's our largest cluster, and it's the most diverse in terms of total jobs. But people of color and women are underrepresented, and by percentages, the cluster is one of the lowest for jobs held by people of color. Over the last five years, employment has grown 10% in Multnomah County compared to 4% nationally. We expect growth here to continue as we build our clean energy economy. New initiatives and policies continue to be adopted to drive private sector growth and build an inclusive workforce. We have high hopes for the Portland Clean Energy Fund and our aggressive climate action work. The cluster is expected to have the highest number of job openings in the next three years, 5,000. It also remains a reliable source of family-wage jobs, with 23% being middle-wage, which is a job that pays $44,700 without a bachelor's degree, so a quarter. As the cluster contains R&amp;D, manufacturing, and services, there's a range of opportunities for jobs. And not only are these companies providing good jobs, they're also developing innovative technologies to advance our climate work. So this is the third time I've been working with the cluster, where we've taken a step back, looked at research, and worked with stakeholders. And I would say this is the most significant shift. In the past, we have primarily worked with how do we grow the cluster and the businesses? Now what we're going to do is continue to do that work and how to grow the businesses, but also how do we create an inclusive workforce, an inclusive cluster? So I'm going to touch on some of the work that we're going to do around our equity work, and then a little around how we're going to continue to grow the industry. To help firms become more inclusive, we are going to work on a firm-by-firm basis to engage them in programs that will drive diversity and equity outcomes. Firms will primarily be in segments with the largest number of job opportunities, including green building, environmental services, energy efficiency, and the utility market. This work will help them expand hiring practices, provide career path opportunities, and build community partnerships. We've been busy during the last year creating equity programming and resources that our companies can engage in. This includes Portland Means Progress, the internship partnership that we have with emerging leaders, the community benefits programs, and the Inspiring Diversity Grant. Currently, we're working with over 30 companies in the Green Cluster to address culture change. Some of these companies in our priority area include PGE, ZGF, Bora Architects, Mortenson, Mackenzie, Salazar Architects, Crowdsource, and Greenhammer. Last year, we piloted the Inspiring Diversity Grant. The grant provided funding to inspire creative, equity-related best practices around workforce and community building. We had over 40 applications, and we were only able to work with nine businesses. All of these firms are in a different place in their culture work, but they're all committed to creating a more inclusive workforce. And the picture here is a meetup we had of the grant recipients. We had three meetups where the businesses were able to share best practices and barriers. We just closed our applications for this year's round, and we got 40 applications again. 10 of those were in some of our leading green building firms. We're hopeful we can grow that program, too. So a little bit on the growth side. We are going to start targeting those businesses with the highest potential of growth in the next three to five years. And they're typically the small to medium-sized manufacturers that need the most help in clean tech. Those three areas are mobility, including mobility as a service, and how we move people and goods in a more efficient manner through electrification, data-driven, and highly automated mobility solutions. The second is digital energy technologies for power generation, reliability, distribution, and system management. In both transportation and energy, we are continuing to see new business ventures being created that enable producers and users to improve operations and accessibility. And the third one is the convergence of energy technologies. With the movement to decarbonize and become more energy-independent, along with the falling costs of renewables and batteries, we're seeing opportunities for utilities, distributed energy companies, and battery storage providers. Our work here includes access to capital, access to new markets, and technical assistance. These are common barriers that affect, excuse me, affect the success of entrepreneurs, and even more so for people of color and women-owned businesses. We have programming in place to address these barriers, including the Eco Capital Event, where we introduce funders to our most promising clean tech startups. We also work with the Oregon Entrepreneurs Network to provide mentoring for entrepreneurs of color and women seeking capital. We also make We also make new connections for our firms to increase sales in domestic and international markets. While our local markets are fine for small firms, firms that are looking to grow must look beyond our immediate market. We provide a platform for our companies to share trade show expenses that allow them to be showcased to make connections and new sales. Here, we leverage our federal and state partners, the Commerce Department and Business And this picture on the left is a company here in Portland called Chargeway. They've developed a platform showing where EV chargers are, and you can filter it based on what kind of EV car you have. And then the picture on the right is an energy storage business that we took to a trade show last year. And lastly, I just wanted to mention that we just revised our We Build Green Cities website, where we can tell our story, and we can also share resources to grow the industry. So if you want to take a look, it's at webuildgreencities.com. Thank you. We build green cities.
All right. Hi, Commissioner, Chair Cruz and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to share our work with you today. My name is Suchet the Ball, and I'm the Athletic and Outdoor Industry Liaison. So I'm going to just give you an overview of, similar to my colleagues, of how I've been working with the industry and also a little on how we're moving our work to align more with the strategic plan of the agency overall through the work of the Cluster Action Plans that was completed. So first, I just want to start with a definition of what we mean by athletic and outdoor. The definition has changed a little over time as we've started to recognize how large the ecosystem actually is. So you have your traditional footwear and apparel companies in gold, in that little honeycomb, and so that's your sort of traditional, you know, big three companies, the Nike, Adidas, Colombias. You also, the industry also includes knife-and-tool, bike-and-gear manufacturers, so there's a little bit of crossover with our advanced manufacturing cluster there. And then the suppliers and service providers to this industry that are shown in black also provide our kind of a bedrock to the industry. And recently, we've also started to include a broader range of consumer products companies and who we talk about when we talk about this industry, as well as who we're servicing. So that can be fashion, accessories, bags, apparel, and other sort of consumer products that are made right here in Portland. So this gives you sort of a better idea of who we work with and where they're, where they are along the spectrum of size and scope. So you've got your big three, Nike, Adidas, Columbia. These are the big employers in the industry, so 90% of the employment is at one of these three companies in the region. And then you have the medium-sized global brands. So these are the well-known brands that are growing, and their presence is known both domestically and internationally, but some of them may have, you know, no more than 100 or so employees, so still pretty small. And then you have the largest component of the industry, which is actually the small businesses. So 96% of the industry is considered a small business, so 50 employees or fewer. And that includes a wide variety of products, and many of the founders of these companies have come from one of the big three. So that's sort of what links them into the ecosystem. And then the entire industry is supported by the bedrock of suppliers and service providers that we sometimes forget about but are very important in why we have this ecosystem here in Portland. So companies such as Wyden Kennedy that help market products, OIA Global that works on shipping and logistics, or Acquint that helps with contract hiring for companies like Nike, they're all a part of what makes the industry thrive here. So this is the number slide that my other two colleagues, Jared and Pam, also showed. You're probably wondering why the jobs number is so small. It is just for Multnomah County, so if you included Nike and Columbia, which are not in Multnomah County, that would probably add close to around 15,000 jobs to that number. So, but in just the city, that jobs number is small because of that. So similar to that, the average wage is a little smaller because it doesn't take into account the wages at Nike or Columbia. But the people of color in the workforce is actually the largest, the percentage is the largest of all four clusters, so that's something that we're pretty proud of. And to Jared's point, it's not just designers in this industry. I know that's kind of what people tend to think of when you think of jobs at Nike or Adidas. You know, it's everything from accounting to retail to sales managers, so there's so much of diversification of career possibilities in this industry, and that's something that we really try to tell when we go out there into the community, that you can work for a big company like Nike, but you don't have to be a designer. You can use your other skills to do that. So a big part of what we do as Cluster Liaisons is really trying to align the strengths of our industries with the needs of the city and our agency. So to that end, based on our Cluster Action Plans and the data presented, we know that the athletic and outdoor industry has a really unique ability to provide middle-wage jobs and career ladders, nurture businesses at a grassroots level, support and employ diverse talent, and come together in service to the greater community. So sort of based on this knowledge and the relationships that we've cultivated over the years, our programs are really being developed to engage, connect, and inform this industry, you know, with hopefully the outcomes that are going to benefit the city as a whole and underrepresented populations, using the strengths that the industry has and can use to further our goals as well. So based on the Cluster Action Plans, we found that the athletic and outdoor work should focus equally on helping companies become more inclusive and helping inclusive companies grow. So to that end, these are the current and upcoming initiatives that we've been working on within both of those categories. So for helping companies become more inclusive, that's really like how we focus on the larger companies, right? Like Jared was saying, like, you know, we need, we know that this industry is diverse and has the potential to provide these career ladders and entry-level jobs, so how do we make sure that these growing companies are becoming more inclusive? So we have the industry website and newsletter, AOPorland.com. That really showcases stories and events and jobs that you can't really access anywhere else. It's kind of the hub for the industry here. The Inspiring Diversity Grant, as Pam mentioned, we had three athletic and outdoor companies go through that program this first year, and we're hoping for hopefully more this next year. The AOP events, I work with a committee of folks from all across the industry, so Nike, Columbia, Pensol, Snow Peak, Keen. They're my committee members, and we work to kind of put on events that are really going to help connect talent to leaders in the industry as well as information, you know, just kind of build those connections because that is ultimately the way most people get jobs still, right? Is like learning how to connect with others and kind of building their network. So that's one of the few organizations that actually does that in Portland for this industry. And then an upcoming initiative that I'm really excited about is sort of a When in Portland Guide. So this was an idea that came out of the Athletic and Outdoor Professionals Committee. So, you know, something that had really been missing in the industry was just collateral or even just a magazine or anything that shows new talent when they come to Portland, especially diverse talent that comes to Portland or wants to come to Portland, like, hey, we're not just, you know, a bunch of white guys in flannel out on a mountain, right? So we want to be able to tell that story, and we want to make sure that it's a joint effort between, you know, the major brands as well as, you know, our institutions like Pensol, PSU, which have great programs for diverse talent, and then also hopefully utilizing some, you know, assistance from Travel Portland or Travel Oregon to kind of tell that outdoor story as well. And then for helping the inclusive companies grow, so that's for the smaller, that's for the entrepreneurs. Like I said, most of this industry is that small business. A lot of times, somebody that left Nike to start their own thing, or someone that's been making bags in their house for forever, and they just need to know how to like get to that next level. So we've got a bunch of programs around helping entrepreneurs, like the Level Up Program, which is formerly known as Peer-to-Peer. So that's really like a shared learning platform for small business owners to learn from experts on sort of the dry stuff of owning a business, right? Like whether it's HR, whether it's, you know, figuring out how to get funding, figuring out, you know, how to do your marketing well or SEO. So we kind of have a couple of courses around that every year. And then the new thing that we're doing for the past two years has been these trade shows. So New York Now, Shop Object are two trade shows that happened in New York. We've gone, this will be, we just got back, so this is the fourth time we've gone, and we've taken a total of 12 companies over this four times. And I don't have the numbers for this last show, but over the last three times we've been, we've made over $150,000 in wholesale orders for those companies. So it seems like a way to really get companies that maybe want to take that next step and become really traded sector, like go beyond just selling at the local markets or go beyond kind of like selling online, and they really want to like grow their presence nationally and internationally. This really seems to be a way that we can provide that to companies at a pretty reasonable cost. And then the Greet and Grow Service Provider Fair, which, Myra, thank you so much for giving a shout-out to that. That's coming up on February 25th. That's another partnership with Merkatus that we're doing because I feel like, like I mentioned, the service provider is, service provider companies are really like the bedrock of this industry and are helping to have these other companies thrive. But a lot of times, it's solopreneurs that are in these service provider companies, or it's really small companies, like one or two people, and they struggle to find clients themselves. So this is kind of like a matchmaking program that's going to help companies that are in that service provider field connect with consumer products and athletic and outdoor companies, as well as food and beverage and cannabis. And I'll pass it on to Kevin. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz, Commission members, my name is Kevin Johnson, and I work with the Metals and Machinery Cluster for our division. Now, we have a lot of manufacturing that's occurring in Portland. In fact, all of my colleagues are involved in manufacturing in some way or another, and some of Pam's companies are the same as my companies, but our primary focus is on metals and machinery. And the definition for that cluster is it's businesses that produce raw metal, shape it, make it into parts, or manufacture machinery or equipment for transportation purposes that is made mostly of metals and metal products. Now, Multnomah County is home to about 256 metals manufacturers. Manufacturing is a cornerstone of the U.S. economy, and it is also the cornerstone of our economy. The manufacturing has the highest multiplier impact of any other sector. For every dollar spent in manufacturing, another $1.40 is added to other sectors of the economy. And in other words, manufacturing helps support suppliers, government pays taxes, transportation sector, accountants, consultants, the legal community, software, higher education, and the list could go on. These are all the entities that manufacturing helps to support. Oh, here we go. So these are the different types of areas that we have for metals, fabricated metals, transportation equipment, and machinery. So now, there are a broad range of things that we produce in this industry. In fact, many people would be very surprised if they learned the types of products that we produce here in this region. As you can see, we make everything from knives to aerospace products and equipment. Anybody involved in manufacturing will see that we have a lot of aerospace, and let's see, what else do we have here? Railroad equipment, and we'll talk more about some of these later on. But as you can see, there's a big, robust list of these items. Now, within manufacturing, we have, as I mentioned, 256 companies, and they employ 13,374, or provide 13,374 jobs. The average pay in this industry is $71,000 a year, and this is about $18,000 above the median wage in the city of Portland or in Multnomah County. Every manufacturing job creates four jobs in other sectors of the economy. Another major fact is that this cluster has about 18.3% of the workers, the employees in this sector or in this industry are people of color. The jobs that are, or these particular jobs have a low entry for barriers, so there's a tremendous opportunity for people of color. In fact, the industry will hire anybody who is willing to work, and they, and this includes people of color, it also includes low-income people and reentry people. There are a number of reentry people, and there are very few jobs that will pay them this much money. All they have to do is meet just a few criteria. Those criteria include be willing to work, show up on time, and be able to pass a drug test on a consistent basis. I'm sure in the construction industry, we see a lot of the same types of things. These are some of our major companies, but these are not all of our major companies. We have a number of other companies that aren't included here, like, for example, if I was to do this over again, I might have added PCC Structurals and Boeing and Blount. And some of the unique things about our businesses is that they evolved from producing products for the forestry industry and also producing for the agricultural and the dock industry. And many of them didn't just make, you know, stamp and make particular products, they, the people who are in those industries would come to them and say, well, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And so they would try to create something that would be able to adapt to what they were attempting to do. And that's what our industry does today as well. Many of them produce products based on blueprints that they receive from other people who want to get things produced. So in other words, if somebody came in and said, well, these are the types of products we've been using, but this particular machine doesn't work as adequately as we'd like it to, the, our companies would help them to produce something else or something that is more adequate and begin selling those on the market as well. So they don't, they make customized items. They very seldom make more than 10 items of the same type. Many of those items are going to be slightly different from the previous items. We learned a long time ago in this area that we weren't going to be able to compete in mass production markets, so we've always focused on customized items in this market. So and then in many cases, they refer to our companies as being engineering firms first and manufacturers second, because that's what goes into a lot of our companies, a lot of our work. There are a lot of people who work on the shop floor, but there are a lot of people who work at desks drawing up a lot of these blueprints. And for example, there's Blount. I know that you know Blount is right outside of town. They make the chainsaw cutting devices, and we're very innovative in this region. They see a problem, they saw a problem, and they said, well, we could make a better cutting instrument. And so what they did was they copied the wood beetle, the same mechanisms that the wood beetle was using, that's what they were using in their cutting instruments, cutting chainsaws, that is. And then we have PCC Structurals. Of course, they focus primarily on titanium, and one of the things that they produce is for the aerospace industry, is for the jet engine blades. They make jet engine blades, and you will see them in many of the jet engines that you see on any type of aircraft. In fact, they have 90% of that jet engine blade market. That's how superior their products are. We also have Greenbrier. They produce trains and rail cars, and the unique thing about rail cars is that after a million miles, they have to be trashed, and they have to make another rail car. It doesn't take that long for these cars to get a million miles because they do a lot of running on those lines, or they have to be refurbished. So there's always going to be business for some of our companies, and I'm sure you're very familiar with Snitzer Steel. They've been taking scraps, and they do some fabricating over there, but they sell a lot of their scraps internationally. So it's a major market for many of our companies. And the companies you see at the bottom of this, Silver Eagle, Aimco, Simplex, Dart, and Amco, they, these are companies that typically travel on and Amco, they, these are companies that typically travel on to trade shows with Pam and myself. They're involved in manufacturing, but they're also involved in entering into the clean tech realm. So you'll see a lot of those businesses there as well. Now, our goals for the industry are to help them increase sales. And we do this through a number of means, and I'll get into some of those as I get to the bottom of this, but let me just go through the top portion. We want to do what we can to stimulate innovation, because innovation and research and development are the things that have helped our industries become strong. In manufacturing, companies have to continually be engaged in research and development, otherwise they're going to be left behind by some of our international competitors. If we want to continue to be competitive, we have to continue to be engaged in research and development. Increase efficiencies, we have a wonderful partner in the Oregon Manufacturing Extension Partnership. They have helped companies increase their efficiencies by as much as 60%. And what this means is that they can, they can, what they were selling, for example, prior to increasing their efficiencies by 60%, what they were selling for $200, they can now sell for $160, make the same amount of profit, and be more competitive when they're competing against their international competition and local competition. We want to continue to support expansion and growth. We want to try to keep our manufacturers here in this region, and we also want to look very closely at succession planning. We know that a lot of the people on the shop floor working in these companies are getting older and older. But not only them, but the ownership is getting older. And there's another point, and that is that it is a very high barrier for people of color to be able to enter into this industry and open up a business, because equipment and machinery can cost as much as, can start. You know, you have to outfit your facility, that's going to be about $200,000, just basic bare items. You need about half a million dollars to a million dollars' worth of equipment and machinery in order to be effective. So we're looking at succession planning as one means of, especially if we can get succession planning going towards employee ownership, of one means of getting people of color some ownership in some of the manufacturing facilities. Now, let's look at some of the events that we're focusing on, or some of the activities. One of them is the Tech Fest Northwest. Every year, they bring in about 1,000 people involved who are startups, who are manufacturers in all different types of industries, coming to participate in Tech Fest Northwest. We participate in that and do something called the Startup and Innovation Networking Conference. And we combine that with our Business-to-Business Supply Chain Program that we do on a regular basis. And the idea there is to try to get more companies buying from our manufacturers, and to also get more companies involved in innovation. That's, that's one of the areas that we're starting to look at primarily as a means of growing our industries and also competing overseas. Then we have a number of programs that we're doing with the Oregon Manufacturing Extension Partnership. I mentioned before that they work on helping companies become efficient, but they also do a series of cohorts. One is the Smart Talent Program. And the way the Smart Talent Program works is it, they teach companies how to become better at training new employees, so that they can take an employee that may not be an absolute A student, could be a C or C-minus student, and be able to train them and give them, and help them develop the skills that they need to be effective at their facility. And that Smart Talent Program has been a major boon for a lot of the companies that have participated in it. Then we have the Business and Innovation Workshop, BIW, and that's the one that focuses on some of our small businesses that are coming from some of our communities, the people of color. They found that what they do in this particular program is, OMEP helps get them the foundation from the very outset on how they can be effective at the beginning, and also provide the additional help as they're growing, so that they maintain a high level of efficiency, and they know exactly what some of these next steps are going to be, and how to scale appropriately. Then we have, as I mentioned, succession planning and also marketing. We also want to promote the importance of manufacturing. We know that industrial land is becoming more and more scarce in Portland, but we need to protect our industrial land as much as possible, because these are where these middle-wage, living-wage jobs are going to be held for many of the people of color who don't have that college degree. So one of the things that we've done is we've established something called the Manufacturing Matters Podcast. And this, every month, we come out with a different podcast that's talking about something in manufacturing. The first one was about Greenbrier, or Gunderson did a podcast on there, talking about some of the work they're doing, their employment, they cover a range of topics. But we just want to get people more familiar with what's involved in manufacturing, and how parents can begin to advise their children on the career opportunities that exist in manufacturing, because I think, or we believe, that a lot of people just don't understand that these opportunities exist. And we want to promote financing and the enterprise zone, get people, more of the companies involved in taking advantage of the enterprise zone, because in manufacturing, if they're buying equipment, as I mentioned, it's going to be very expensive equipment. And they're the ones who can really take advantage of some of the enterprise zone opportunities. And as has been mentioned, we go to a lot of trade shows, and we bring our companies with us, because we want to give them an opportunity to sell more, and this is, this is how that is done. And this basically concludes my presentation, and now I believe we're open to questions.
Questions? Comments? I'm sorry? Yeah, we'll have a couple of speakers after this, too. So, do you want to?
I have, uh, what?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, that was fantastic. I just kind of want to know a little bit about how people find out about a lot of these initiatives and opportunities. I'm curious about the podcast that you mentioned, how does someone find that? And, and also just some of the, like, the Inspiring Diversity Grant, how are we advertising these? How do people find out about them?
Well, to begin with, the manufacturing podcast, we can make sure that we get all the commissioners a link to the podcast, so they can take a look at that every time it comes out.
But how do, how would people find it? Like, is there, is it out there for people, or how is it?
Well, it is, and it's out there through a variety of mediums. We're promoting it through, OMEP is sending it out with some of the materials that they send out on a monthly basis. We're trying to get it out to the schools, and, but that is definitely a consideration. We need to really make sure that we're getting it out to as many people as possible.
I also wanted to answer that. We often work with our industry trade associations, and there's a lot of community groups that we'll, that we partner with. So for me, I work a lot with the Oregon Solar Energy Industry. I also work with Drive Oregon, which represents the EV industry. So they have memberships, pretty large memberships, so they help distribute information out. Virtu Lab is another one for me.
And then I also just wanted to mention, I know Tori mentioned it earlier, but like 40% of our role really is to be out there and engaging with the community, and telling people about what we offer through our individual cluster work. So, and then, I know, at least I do, and I know Pam and Jared, you do, we have newsletters that go out, and we have mailing lists, we're constantly updating those. We also utilize Prosper Portland's mailing list and website as well, especially for cross-cluster initiatives like IDG.
And piggybacking off of what Sue said there, it's our newsletters, and then it's word of mouth coming directly from us, and that's largely based on reputation and relationships that we have. I think, you know, Pam talked about a number of programs, the Inspiring Diversity Grant, the Small Business Internship Grant that we've done, both of those are for the second year running. And then we also, I mentioned, the manager training on how to be a more effective and inclusive manager. The thing that unites all three of those is that we have more interest than we have availability for it. So just speaking to the manager training, we had 70 applications for 20 spots on that.
With respect to the grants, how much are the grants, and how much have we allocated in our budget for those grants?
For the Inspiring Diversity Grant, we had $40,000 last year. That had to include any marketing, staff. So we were able to give nine grants, and we had to cut all of them at least in half. So unfortunately, it was the first time a lot of those businesses have done equity work, and they didn't know the cost, and it was a lot more expensive than they had originally thought. So we had to cut a lot of the work that they intended to do in half.
I want to be mindful of the time, but I do, thank you so much. I'd have maybe three comments and perhaps a question in there if you'd like to respond to it, no pressure. So I appreciate the comments, and maybe this might be related even more to something that you mentioned, Tori, is this idea of sort of retaining, training, and what I would like to add to that piece is coaching, that a lot of the times, we do a bunch of training, and it doesn't really stick unless there's some sort of mechanism in place to help really, help folks attach those ideas to something real, and it becomes more of a train-the-trainer type model, so that the less of the pressure's on you. I think it's really cool that you have a high demand and low supply, but what would it look like if you, if the folks who come to train with you then become sort of expert and can train their own constituents? I mean, that really is sort of the gift that keeps on giving. And then in relationship to that, again, another comment that came up was that we're moving closer to, moving away from outputs and moving more towards outcomes. And I realize with the training, I think one of you mentioned that you do a survey at the end of the sort of session, and I think one of the things that I would be interested in, there's sort of primary, secondary, and tertiary outcomes. One is how effective is the training? And that's something that can be assessed immediately after. You have sort of a pre and a post right there at the meeting. And then there is, if the training is being done over a course of time, then you, your secondary outcome is, now that we've trained you, how have you been able to take these principles and apply them in the, in your workplace? What does that look like? And then a sort of a tertiary outcome is, how has it impacted your bottom line? Right? And so as we think about moving from doing the work, right, just sort of reporting numbers and moving more towards how you execute that, just some additional thoughts that I wanted to just offer to the great work that you're already doing. So these are just reinforcements. And then lastly, I think, Jared, you talked about entrepreneur, the software and media portion, and that one of your stated goals was to do more entrepreneurship, or at least support folks of color being able to sort of own businesses in this particular market. I was wondering in particular what the hugest barrier or foreseeable barriers are, and we, I think it was mentioned in this report, or at least somewhere where, I read everything before I came, Pam, thank you, and Justin for sending it, but I'm curious about the access to capital component, and if that is a barrier, and what plans do we sort of have in place structurally to really help remedy that? Particularly for communities who have been chronically marginalized, we want to see participate in this market. So some of those are comments, some are questions. You don't have to answer all of them today if you don't want to. It can be sort of a follow-up via email as well, I just wanted to offer that caveat. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the great presentation, really. You're all doing great work, and it's impressive to hear all of it. It's an amazing amount of effort and amazing effort, amazing job you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, so we, before we leave this item, we have two speakers, and forgive me if I don't say your name properly, Kareem Hassanin with Bora Architects, and Marcus Carter with Tech Town. If you could, yes, please, you could join us, that'd be great.
Do you want either of us to go?
Whoever would like to go first would be great. Thank you for coming today, and thanks for agreeing to speak and share your experience with us.
Sure. I'm happy to go first.
Go ahead.
All right. My name's Kareem Hassanin, and you said it perfectly, so thank you.
Lucky.
That's fairly uncommon. And I work for Bora Architects. And just a little bit of information about the firm that I work with and myself, I am an associate at Bora Architects, and I am the senior marketing coordinator at the firm. My background is in landscape architecture, kind of cross-disciplinary. Bora's been around for over 60 years, and we've worked throughout this city. We also work nationally, working with, for example, the Portland Public School System and PCC's Metro Workforce Project currently. And I'm also on the equity team at Bora, which is new, and directly a result of our receipt of the Inspiring Diversity Grant. And what I really want to do is communicate our sincere gratitude and appreciation for the opportunity to have that funding to really drive transformational change in our organization. Not just our organization, but I'd also like to emphasize the ripple effects that having that funding internally has provided to us, and then that we're seeing out in the communities that we serve. As folks may know, the architecture and planning industry has a pretty gnarly legacy of being perpetuator of inequity in the urban environment in particular. And we tend, as an industry, not to think a lot about that. We tend to think, well, our clients ask us to do something, and let's execute it in a way that is as beautiful and affordable and timely as possible. But what we see is that we then continue to perpetuate structural inequities and marginalization of communities that tend not to have the access to the resources that we have. And then we are also not able to recruit and retain people from those communities that would be able to drive the change in our industry, that we need to be more responsive. Having this grant funding has, not only at the most basic level, given us the ability to carry out a series of trainings on diversity, equity, and inclusion within our practice, but it's also transformed the way that we talk about the work that we do, and the impacts that we have on our own staff and on the communities that we serve. It's driven us to form an equity committee, it's driven us to have conversations about who has what voice within the practice, and what the power hierarchies are, and why they are that way, and were they inherited, and maybe they should change. These are all things that are rare in our industry, things that I don't hear a lot of my peers talking about. It's also prompted us to figure out what we need to do in order to recruit and retain staff that are from diverse racial backgrounds, diverse socioeconomic backgrounds, diverse abilities, and if we're out there trying to design a more inclusive and more accessible world, what are we doing in our own space to make a more accessible and inclusive workplace? So I would say that we're, as a result of this grant, at the beginning of a long and perpetual process, but not having, having the accountability that this grant provides to us, a specific outside party that we need to report back to, has really enabled us to identify the fact that this work needs to be ongoing, and figure out what we need to do to fund it ourselves going forward. And while I think the firm would be happy to continue to pursue grant funding for this effort ourselves, we also want other firms in our, other practices in our industry to have the opportunity to access those resources, and we're encouraging everyone that we know to do just that.
Thank you.
I'm Marcus Carter. I run technical recruitment over at Instrument, and I have been extremely fortunate to serve as a steering committee member as part of the Portland Tech Town pledge, and I hope to share, you know, just some insights regarding the pledge and what it has meant. First and foremost, I think the pledge really offers an opportunity for companies to mobilize and show agency around their commitment to actually diversify tech and create a more equitable tech ecosystem. In order to do that, I think, you know, it's going to be a long-term effort, because that, in my opinion, comes down to how do we better center and focus on outcomes and experiences of systemically marginalized communities? The other piece is, we have to focus on how do we engage and create pathways to tech? So earlier, Jared talked about partnering with the Portland Workforce Alliance, showing up to, you know, 7,000 students across, you know, the state, and being able to show them different careers in tech. And then again, thinking of this idea of centering outcomes and experiences of, you know, folks of color, we've actually worked with Portland Workforce Alliance and Portland Public Schools to create a girls-of-color cohort and bring them to these tech companies. Now, that enables us to, A, not only sort of retain our employees who are interested in how in how are we reaching back, B, it also sort of exposes the inequities at various parts of the pipeline. Because we've had teachers who are CTE teachers in different schools and said, hey, a young African-American woman came to me and said she didn't even know coding and development existed, right? I have to step up my job, right? So again, this idea of having agency around, you know, pipeline development as a collective is important because a lot of companies have been fairly passive in that manner, right? Post a job, hope everyone shows up. And not understanding you got to do much more than that. The other piece I would highlight is the collective being able to amplify and sort of mobilize with affinity groups. So Portland has like a Portland Women in Tech group. It has like an Out in Tech group. We worked with Partners in Diversity and we had a Happy A, Happy Hey, Happy Hour. And to hear people say, hey, as a black person in tech, when I go home and speak to my friends, they think it's all algorithms, machine learning. They don't understand me. But to have 50, 60 of y'all in this room and to know you speak my language is priceless, right? Without that kind of partnership, where do they get that? Right? You can't just go to any meetup and find 50 people of color specifically within tech. Just doesn't happen. So again, I think, you know, the effort has been positive. I think it is going to be a long-term play in terms of getting organizations to switch and really focus on what is applicable for these groups and not necessarily this is how we've always done it, right? So I think we've done a lot in terms of organizing and again, being able to mobilize behind those efforts on multiple fronts with Tech Town.
Great, thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
Really powerful, thank you. Really great to hear what you all are doing.
Really appreciate you coming in to share your time and your experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess as you're getting up, just one comment that resonated with me for both of you is the importance of that early part of the pipeline. And I know Bora has some partnerships too with like, with high schoolers through De La Salle North Catholic High School and has actually some amazing stories of rehiring kids after they got through architecture school. And I think getting that pipeline early is a really, really important part of the effort. So it's exciting to hear that.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Any more questions or comments for staff? Nope?
Just gratitude.
Just gratitude, okay. More gratitude. Thank you for all your great work. Thanks. Great update. Okay, so now we're going to adjourn the Prosper Portland Board Meeting and go into executive session. So our Prosper Portland Board Meeting is now adjourned. The Prosper Portland Board will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.66.